Broadcast has been set at 5:02.
Thank you. The time is 5:02. I call to order the April 12, 2022 Policy and Governance Committee meeting. Good evening. Thank everyone for being here. I'm Judy McInnes Murray, Chair for the Policy and Governance Committee, and an at-large board member. We will now have introductions of committee members, starting with the board members, administration staff, and board office staff.
Hi Pamela Boozer Struther, Vice Chair of the Policy and Governance Committee and District III Board of Education member.
Hi, this is Sonia Williams, Vice Chair of the Board of Education, and I represent District Nine.
Okay, and Dr. Miller? Oh, I'm sorry, Alvaro.
Hello, Alvarez Rees, a member of the Policy and Governance Committee and Student Board Member.
Okay, and an ex officia officer, Dr. Williams, I mean, Dr. Miller?
You did. That's me.
Okay. All right, administrative staff, starting with Ms. Irvin.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Valerie Irvin. I represent the administration as the liaison to the Board of Education.
Good evening. I'm Robin Welsh, and I'm the Director of Compliance and Ethics.
And board staff? Anise Johnny?
Anise Ellis, Administration Assistant.
Thank you. Welcome to all of you. While I was away, I just take a moment, a personal privilege here. Thank you for organizing this meeting and the pre-meeting, and I appreciate all the products that you have provided for today's meeting. So, thank you. Kudos. Colleagues, due to the no, sorry. Colleagues, due to the adjournment of the 2022 General Assembly, item number four, House Bill 797, student membership alteration, has been removed from the agenda. May I have a motion to approve the April 12, 2022 meeting agenda as amended on board docs?
Second.
Okay, it has been seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any abstentions, any nays? The agenda is approved. Now, we will have 1.4, Approval of Committee Minutes, March 29, 2022 meeting. May I have a motion to approve the March 29, 2022, meeting minutes?
So moved.
It has been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any abstentions, any nays? The minutes are approved. There are no public, no, there are no registered public comment speakers this evening. So, we will go right into 3.0, Policies for Review and for Action. 3.1, New Policy, New Draft Policy, Student Registered Sex Offenders Entry On To School Property. I will yield the floor to Ms. Welsh for an overview of the new policy.
So, this policy is one that we did discuss at the last Policy and Governance Committee meeting on March 29. And so, it's now actually in real policy language, and it reflects the Maryland's model policy and the requirements that they specifically wanted to have included in a policy related to student registered sex offenders. The main pieces to this policy, it's critical that we know that these students are prohibited from coming on school property. However, they are still considered students of record, and therefore, they absolutely will be able to receive an education from the Prince George's County Public Schools. And the education they're going to receive, it'll be actually a variety of different pathways. So, they, for example, they, if you keep going down just a little, right here they are. You can have, there's a possibility of providing home and hospital teaching, also virtual learning. Depending on the student and the needs of the student, possibly referral to Regional Institute for Children and Adolescents, which we refer to as RICA. And then, depending again on the circumstances, another alternative method would be non-public education. The other important piece to this policy is that they are, that we are supposed to be communicating to the parent that the student is a student of record, and that these are the alternatives for being able to receive education. And that happens when we receive notice, and generally, it's a reportable offense that would be presented to the superintendent or the principal of the school that the student's attending. And once we have that notice, then we meet with the parent and communicate to them the student's not on school property. However, we need to plan and come up with a plan for how we're going to provide education for the student. And the last piece that just, just went through has to do with the thing that once the student is off the registry, then there has to be a plan for bringing the student back to school and a transition plan, which means, you know, making sure we have interventions in place, making sure staff are well-trained, those types of things, so that the student is, you know, will be successful once they enter the school property.
Okay, thank you. Any questions, comments from the committee?
Madam Chair, Madam Committee Chair?
Yes.
I have one question.
Okay, Board Member Williams?
My question is regarding the age group in which a student is, becomes, when they can become someone on their registry. Is there a certain age group, or, and if so, what is that age group? And will this process or the form of education that we're providing them, will that be until they graduate from high school?
Ms. Welsh, do you, you mean, okay?
Yes, so I actually do not, well, I would assume that, that a student could end up, depending on, on the severity of a sexual offense that a student would commit. It could be, it could be a wide range of age groups, you know, grade levels. And this, they have defined in the actual model policy that they're, when they talk about students, they're talking about any student starting at age of five years of age, up through eight, 22 years of age. So, it would, I, I think it could actually be any age level or grade level. And of course, those would be factors that would be considered when they're looking at what type of education we're going to provide the student. You know, for a younger student, virtual learning might not really be as appropriate as possibly home and hospital, where they have, they have someone, you know, one-on-one working with the student. So, it would really, it would be something we'd have to look at. As far as how long they stay on the registry, that I really don't know. I'd have to, I'd have to look at that. And it's, it's actually this act, it's listed on the, in the policy, the Sex Offender Registration Notification Act, SWRNA. And I can certainly look that up for you. And bring the answer back to you, but I'm not sure how long they actually require someone to stay on a sexual registry, sexual offender registry. So.
Okay. Excuse me, my only comment is this. That's, that's not in, within the control of the school system, though, right, Ms. Welsh?
Correct.
Okay, so that would be something that would be provided to us. Go ahead, Ms. Williams.
And so, that, that was really my, the basis for the question, is that if, you know, we're, we're used to hearing, or we're more accustomed to having adults be on the register for, as a sex offender. But if we're talking about a child as young as five, that could be, could be on the list for whatever reason, I would assume that somewhere in our policy, or somewhere in the procedure, we could provide the detail for what their career, their educational path looks like. It, it just seems, it seems that we need a little bit more detailed information about that, because if we're talking about an elementary student, let's say they're in, they're in the fourth grade, and they're put on this list, if that's even possible, now we're talking about them going into middle school, and then going into high school. Their career path could be constructed similar to a student of special needs. And so, I think that we, we need a little bit more detail around that, I think.
Okay, Ms. Williams, are you asking for it to be included in the policy, or is it something that you would like to see in the administrative procedure?
I think we need to determine where it goes. I don't, I don't know where.
Okay. Okay, Ms. Welsh, I guess we'll send it back to you and the legal folks to help us with that.
I, I would recommend that it actually goes into the administrative procedure, because that's, that's detail that we would, you know, would break out, you know, by grade levels or whatever.
Okay, and, yeah, and I think what, what I'm understanding after reading this is that someone, I guess, in the justice system will let us know in, in time, it will let us know when these students come off of, or should come off of the register. At least, that's what I read. And, and I would think that the administrative procedure would cover the steps for us to follow when that happens. So, Ms. Williams, what is your preference? Do you want us to send it back? Or are you open to us sending it forward for public comment and seeing when they put it, when they put the administrative procedure together?
I'm, I'm good with it being on the administrative procedure. I just think that we, we have to know at some point where it's going to be. I'm, I'm good with the information that's there. It just seems like we need to know a little bit more. That's all.
Okay, so it, it says here in number five, that the Chief Executive Officer shall establish an administrative procedure implementing this policy. So, I guess, Ms. Welsh, I guess we can entertain sending it forward to the full board for public comment, and you go back to the, to the drawing board and just let folks know when they create the administrative procedure. We need a little bit more details into how we're going to ensure that a child that's on this list, say, in elementary school, how are we going to educate them through high school?
And, and we will absolutely do that, because I, because the schools themselves are going to need that more specificity, so that they know what, you know, what direction to take and everything. So, we'll be glad to do that.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Ellis, I, I can't see anybody else. Is anybody else's hand up? Okay. Any more comments from any other committee member? Okay, if not, may I have a motion to send the Registered Sex Offenders Entry On To School Property forward to the full board for public comment at the April 28, 2022 board meeting?
I move.
Okay, it's been moved and properly seconded. We'll send this policy forward. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, motion passes. Thank you so much. 3.2, New Policy, 1120, Maryland Public Information Act. I will yield the floor to Ms. Welsh to give us an update on the new draft policy. Ms. Welsh, you're muted. I mean, you can't hear me.
Thank you. Thanks. So, this is a new policy, and it's based on Section 4101 of the General Profession Article of the Antedated Code of Maryland, which talks about Maryland Public Information, is the Public Information Act, and talks about all the requirements that we are supposed to meet when we get a request. I would say that the important pieces here are that, first of all, that the policy itself is basically affirming its commitment to compliance with that Maryland Public Information Act by releasing information that we are required to release when we do receive a request. Also, it makes sure that we are, that our staff that are providing those responses are actually responding and providing the responses. So, there are some definitions that are in this act, in this policy, which are specific to, again, to the law that's laid out. It gives you information about who would be requesting, with a reference as the applicant. It's, what they are, the policy is clear, is that this, we're counting business days when we're providing a response, and not like weekends or holidays. And then, of course, custodian is the person who has physical custody. In this instance, it's the school system. And then, it does talk about general information documents. So, there's a lot of documents that we have that are really general information, like meetings from the, minutes from the open meetings, for the board's open meetings, when you've adopted policies, you know, administrative procedures, the annual budget, the organizational chart. All those things are general information documents. And, and what we want to do is encourage people to go to the website and look for this stuff versus doing an official NPIA request. The other thing is that it does talk then about the public record and the fact that any, when we're providing this information, it can be in any form. As far as whether it's a car, and this is the list of the types of things that it could be that we are actually providing. And then, they, as far as the standards, the next part of the administrative procedure talks about the standards. What it does allow for is that if the applicant is asking to see the, something that's in the public record, they can do so during regular business hours. There is absolutely no obligation to create records. So, suppose you get a response, a request, some type of data, but we don't collect that particular type of data or whatever, we do not have to come up with a, a form or a report that has that data, if in fact, that's not something that we do collect. And it's important to know that privileged and confidential information is not subject to release. So, student or employment records that has personally identifiable information is not allowed. Employees' home addresses, telephone numbers, personality evaluations, employee recommendations, trade secrets, test questions, any of those types of things, we absolutely are not allowed to release that information to anyone that requests. And then, and let me see, if, if in fact, someone does request for us, this is number F, if they request a general information document, but it happens to not be on the, the website, then whatever the most recent version we have, that's what we would provide, provide the applicant. Again, it does, if you keep going down, it does also, it reinforces the fact that we absolutely cannot release student records, including student directory information or student transcripts, because that is all protected under FERPA. And you, and you absolutely cannot destroy public records. If you get a request for public records, you, you know, you must provide those public records. And this does require that the CEO is directed to implement an administrative procedure consistent with this policy, and also that there be an annual report that is posted on the website by November 31 of each year, which gives statistical information about how many public record requests we did receive for the fiscal year, for the previous fiscal year.
Okay, are, okay, are you done?
Yes, I am.
Okay, thank you. Any questions from the committee, comments? Okay, seeing none. Yeah, okay. May I have a motion to recommend the new draft policy, 1120, Maryland Public Information Act, be forwarded to the full board for public comment at the April 28, 2022 board meeting?
I move.
There is, it has been moved and properly seconded. I saw, I believe, it's been moved and properly seconded to send the, the policy, 1120, Maryland Public Information Act, forward to the full board for public comment at the April 28 meeting. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Thank you. 3.3, Revised Draft Policy 0107, Ethics Regulations. Ms. Welsh now will walk us through the revisions of the draft policy. Ms. Welsh?
Yes, Ms. Ellis, are you going to?
Oh, are you going to, okay.
So, if, if you recall at the last meeting, when we did talk about the ethics policy, I shared that Dr. Golson had received, as well as every superintendent in the state, had received a letter from the General Counsel from the State Ethics Commission. And in his, his letter, he talked about the fact that there had been two bills that were passed in the 2021 legislative session that required changes to the state law, ethics law, as well as the model policies, and which also required us then to make changes. So, I will be pointing out those changes. I did go over them last time, just quickly had named them, but you'll get to see them in the policy. As well as back, I think the last time we reviewed it was at the January 25 Policy and Governance Committee meeting. And at that time, Mr. Cooper had reviewed the changes that were from the 2017. There was a bill that was passed at the 2017 General Assembly. And actually, in the General Counsel's letter to the superintendent or to the CEO, there was a comment that said, any school system that has not met those requirements must incorporate those changes also. So, they have been pointed out to you previously. I, as we go through it, I can certainly make, I will tell you whether or not this is the, the changes from the 2021 legislative session, or are these the changes to the, from the 2017 legislative session? The other thing I want to point out is that, based on your request at the January 25 meeting, any place where there had been board office, we did change that language back to the language that was previous, where it says a panel or an office designated by the panel. So, that's been incorporated in there. And then, the other request had been a, where I think there were places where it said the, the Chief of Staff, I think, or something. Would, if the panel had a report or whatever, and they would, it would be given to the Chief of Staff, and that would be disseminated to the board members. And we did change that to, it would go to, that, that report would go to the Chair of the Board of Education, and then the Chair would be responsible for designating it to the board members. So, I think that reflects all of the changes that we, that were made to the, to the policy.
Okay.
So, if we start off, and so, and just to give you a little, what I did was I color-coded the changes from legislative sessions. So, anything that, that's in this aqua green, this is changes that Mr. Cooper had shared with you previously, and they came from the, from the, the commission, the State Ethics Commission, and, and is about that, that law that got passed back in 2017. And then, see changes that are highlighted that are in yellow, and those are all the new language changes that came from the 2021 legislative session and those changes. So, if you want me to, I mean, I can, we're going fast, but I can just point them out to you as you go through. For example, can you, Ms. Ellis, can you just take it back just a little bit further to the beginning where you see, I think there's another, yes. So, it starts off with, does it, I think it does it made it a second home? And then, if you, and it provides that definition, that was in the, in the, in the law. And then, if you continue down to the next green one, to the aqua one, it then provides definition of, I think, of the second home, a home address, and then the primary home, and the designated second home, that talks about that. And then, continue down a little bit further. And then, there is the mutual fund or exchange traded fund that was also from the 2017 General Assembly. That was the changes that we had to make. And then, I think we should, coming up on a green, a yellow one very soon. So, okay, then principal, another one from 2017. Then, the first one that, and I remember sharing this with you on, on the 29th, quasi-government, and we had to include that as a definition. And that's from the 2021 General Assembly that we went over. Then, if you continue, second home, that again, 2017. Hold on, let me just see, okay. Public schools, this is just a language change. A panel may have, shall have, this was changes that had been done back, I think, when Mr. Cooper, I put those in just to designate how many years that they would have, a panel member would have on the panel. And then, if you continue, oh, go back up one second. Okay, so the Office of General Counsel shall assist the panel in carrying out its duties. And that was an area that previously you had wanted, it had, we had, I think, the board, the board's counsel. So, we did change that. And previously, it said nay, and now we have changed that to shall. And the, the, let's see. And if there is a conflict, then of course, the panel shall identify another counsel to assist the panel in the, in the manner, whatever it was. And the board will provide sufficient funds to hire the counsel. And then, the next one down, that one, the panel has no authority to interpret either other board policies. That was removed at the request, I think it might have been, you board member, McInnes Murray, where you had said, let's take that language out. And then, the panel, I think this is, this, oh, this previously said board office, and instead, it says now assisted by the CEO or other designated official designated by the board. This has to do with the custodian of the forms, holding on to the, to the forms. And then, if you keep going further down, keep going, that's just a language change. Okay, the aqua one again was language that was there before. And actually, this is the one that I remember, a board member, William Duke, specifically requested, where did this come from? And it actually came from the state law, where it talked about a respondent and what, and what a respondent was. So, that was, that was, that change. So, then, we did add upon specific request of the panel that identifies that certain documents required, the counsel advising the panel may assist in the collection of evidence and submit it to the panel. So, and then, the next one says, the panel shall, okay, this is one of the changes I just had shared with you before. The panel shall forward this recommendation to, to the, wait, stop right there. Recommendation to the Chair of the Board for dissemination to the board, because previously, they had put in Chief of Staff. So, we did change that. And if you continue down to F, little one, or little, yeah, little one, it's again, the same thing, where there's a recommendation from the panel. Again, that is going directly to the Chair of the Board for dissemination to the board versus the Chief of Staff. And then, if you can continue forward, again, it says, we'll forward this report to the, to the Chair of the Board. And then, you, oh, the, the other language further here is about the making sure that the information, any, any of this information is public information, and that's in accordance with the Maryland Information Act. And then, and this is just a change, I think, for organization, because at some points, it wasn't, it wasn't lining up perfectly with the model. So, that, that is the prohibited conduct, conduct and interest. If you continue down. Ms. Anise, yes. And then, we have more changes. This again, had to do with the lobbyist language, which was, again, came from the, it was the General Counsel from the commission, and that is referencing changes in the law from 2017. So, we, we had to put that language in. And then, if you continue, here we have more 2017 changes that, based on the, on that. Here we have more 2017 changes that, based on the, on that model policy. And then we continue, keep going. More, here we go, for prestige of offices, also came from the 2017 changes and the model policy. And then continue. And more, there was still a lot. So then. Then we get to one that has to do with, yeah, one that most recent, 2021, that those changes from the two bills that got passed. So this is one which has to do with, and associate, any, has to do, can't, may not, any official may not, and I just saw a type bill appear, an official may, it says mine, I've got to remember that, may not under gifts, okay? May not knowingly accept a gift. And then the other, one of the other restrictions, if they, if you have reason to know that the gift is coming from an association or any entity acting on behalf of an association that is engaged only in representing counties or municipal corporations. So that was one of those changes that we shared last time on the 29th. And then if you continue. This is again, this was reference, making it a little bit more clear. I think before there, it was a different language to get you back to part of the policy. So this is just like clarifying language, basically. And then if you continue further down. There's more like, more language changes. There was in the 2012 language, there was, I mean, 2021 bills, they talked about disclosure of confidential information. And the former, in a former, a former official or individual's public position or former public's position, and making sure they don't, you don't discharge any information that you found. You may not be employed more, but you still have this information. So you can't discharge this information to anyone else. And then also, this was new language that you can't retaliate against an official or an employee reporting, participating in a investigation of potential violation of the policy. And then if you continue on. Okay, so these were, let me just see, this, follow the statements required in our section with the panel, the board office or the board. This is the board, a candidate to be a board member who they can, who they can file their financial disclosure form with. And then it's, this again, this, the one in Aqua actually came from the, from the 2017 bill in that legislative session. Then, as you can see, there's all these changes in the office designated by the panel. They, for F, and then for 5A, the panel or office designated by the panel. Previously, there had been, it was all board office. So all of that's been taken out. You can, one right after the other. Where are we now? Put it back to the other, the language. Policy. And then if you continue on. And there you have, the first one is from the 2017 legislation. And the, the rest of them are from the, the yellow ones. Changes have to do with, this is all new language where the board or office designated by board shall not provide public access, access to information related to consideration received from. And then it's University of Maryland's Medical System, a governmental entity of the state or local government, the state or quasi-governmental entity of the state, local government in the state. And then retention record requirements. Again, we took out the board office and put in the office, the panel or the office designated by the panel. And so then if there is any question, like someone, like the board office or the panel or someone receives a request wanting a copy of, I say, a financial disclosure form, then it says the board office would consult with the Office of General Counsel just to make sure it's okay to release that information. And then. Oh, if, this is new, the yellow highlighted area has to do with, this is again, 2021, has to do with if there's required to disclose the name of a business. If there, if that business is trading under any other name or doing any other type of business, then you have to also disclose that information. The pretty, then your Aqua language, the stuff highlighted in Aqua, that is from the previous changes that came from the 2017 legislative session. And if you keep going, again, 2017 changes. And continue, and more, 2017. What's this? This was, I think, clarifying language. An individual may satisfy, satisfies the requirement to report the amount of interest held under item to be of this paragraph by reporting instead of the dollar amount. And then it gives you that information, equity interest in a corporation. And then if you continue. Again, we have more 2017 changes that we had gone over previously. And then you can keep going. And now you have the 2021 changes, which has to do with gifts. Again, this whole idea that you not receiving a gift that's in excess of $20 from an association or any entity acting on behalf of the association that's engaged only in representing counties or municipal corporations. And then if you can continue further. See here, again, we have the, the statement filed, the January 1st, 2019, the individual spouse is a lobbyist. That was again, 2017. And then all of this yellow stuff comes from the 2021 changes that they had sent us. The General Counsel from the State Ethics Commission had sent us that, of all those things we had to include. And then if you keep going. More language, again, and interest held any time during the applicable period. And then they talk about the, all the different aspects of different business entities, and whether they own 10% or greater of the interest, or it could be 25 or 50. So it just lays out specifically what information you would be providing in the financial disclosure forms. And then that whole section ends, the whole part for board members and for people that are running for a board position. And then if you go down here, so this is the employee, employees or appointed officials. So this is really the employee. So we did, what we did do was we, I think there was also, I think, again, this was board member Williams had requested that we not have individual positions in there. And so instead, we have all positions included in the executive cabinet, identified executive level positions, then associate, superintendent, principal. I mean, those positions, fine, associate, superintendent, principals, and assistant, assistant principals, because they're, they're like everywhere. But we originally had specific positions as purchasing staff. So instead, we just put purchasing staff, and then the internal auditors. And then, of course, any official employee that is committing the school system to renting or purchasing or leasing products with aggregate value of $100,000 in a fiscal year. The next one has to do with, again, changing the language. So it's a, the, all of this is filed, like the employee files this with the panel or the office designated by the panel. And then if you continue. Further down, then we have more language. Again, it's, it's very similar to what was with the, with the Board of Ed members. It's the same thing with employees as far as disclosing names of businesses or relationship to University of Maryland's Medical Center. It's almost identical. So that's again, for the financial disclosure. And then it does have language which matches the board's language. It says, the panel shall review financial disclosure statements submitted under this section for compliance with provisions of this section and shall notify individuals submitting a statement of admissions or deficiency. And that is actually, it was in our old document too. Our current policy that we, for the board members, that the panel would do that. And then the board, upon the recommendation from the panel, may take appropriate enforcement action to ensure compliance with the section. So if someone, let's say, they file a financial disclosure form, and we find out that absolutely they're in violation of, of, they have a conflict of interest or something, and the panel recommends that there's some type of enforcement action, the board can take that action. And then we have the change again in the language. So we got rid of board office, and now it's office designated by the panel. And if you continue, we're almost there. Lobbying is one of the last ones. And then, let's see, yes, designated by the panel. Long, the registration statement, so that one is again, a 2017 language from that bill. Then we have the designated by the panel language again. And if you keep going, and then the previous, those last two had to do with language that changes that happened in 2017 with that particular bill. So I think that, or I think, we'll keep going a minute, Ms. Ellis, in case, oh, I still, I almost missed some. Can you just go up one little tad, one second, please? The board is approved, make grand exemptions, modifications, supervision of this policy to employees and appointed officials who, who are not members of the board. And that was, I think, just clarifying language from before. So that, that is in the nutshell. It's a lot of changes. And I did try to do it quickly. But if you have any questions, I certainly will work to answer your questions.
This was a mammoth task, and I appreciate the efforts of you, Ms. Welch, and the staff who assisted you. For me, when I read it, your color coding helped me a lot. So I appreciated that. So now we will entertain comments and questions from the committee. Any comments, any questions from anybody? Seeing none, I think that's a testament, Ms. Welch, to how well you did. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
May I have a motion to recommend the revised policy 0107 Ethics Regulations be forwarded to the full board for public comment at the April 28, 2022 board meeting?
So moved.
Okay, it's been moved and properly seconded that we forward the policy to the full board at the April 28th board meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And the motion passes. Thank you so very, very, very much. We have one more. Policy. Revised Policy 5143 Bullying, Harassment, or Intimidation. Ms. Welch, there were no public comment responses. Would you walk us through the revisions of the draft policy, please? Ms. Welch, you were, we, we need to unmute you.
Thank you. Are you?
I'm on the bullying.
Yes, but Ms. Ellis, are you planning to stick that on the screen or not?
Screen share the bullying policy.
Yes, one moment, you can start if you would, please, introduce.
Okay, so one of, one of the major changes that the, the new bullying policy, the board, the state's bullying policy, bullying harassment or intimidation policy, their model policy, they did expand the definitions for bullying, cyberbullying, harassment, intimidation, and retaliation. Plus, they included new definitions for targeted students and then school-sponsored activities. We did, we previously, if you look at the old language, they referenced victim. And we actually have replaced that language with targeted student. And then the other thing is with the, another major change is that we have, still have restorative practices, but that is incorporated under prevention efforts. So you keep, if you keep. Keep going down, Ms. Ellis. As I did go over the definitions, yes. Keep, keep traveling down there. Wait, 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 oop, okay, can you back up for a second? You went pretty quickly. And so we haven't broken out, just so you understand the format, keeps you going up just a little bit further. So it actually is. If you, just one more up, just one more, just please, can I just go up one more page, please? So first, we talk about prevention. So what is it that we, as a school system, can do to prevent bullying, harassment, or intimidation? And one of the things is making sure staff, first of all, are aware of, of the, of the, the application, that we have the online application where you can put the information in, the online reporting form that you put the information in so that the, so that they will report bullying if they see it, or if they inform students about reporting bullying. You can continue down, Ms. Ellis. And then also doing school-wide evidence-based anti-bullying programs so that that's, again, just training students and staff about, you know, really, anything that's anti-bullying and the programs that are available. And then the, if you continue further, and some of these are things that have, were already there that we had. But I think if you continue for a little bit further down, I think we added, yes, the restorative practices. So we added restorative practices and medial measures designed to prevent bullying. And again, the reason, and I think I shared this previously, the reason being is, is that when there is bullying going on, there is actually an imbalance of power between the bullier and the targeted student being bullied. And so restorative practices at this, one of the forms of, one of the things of restorative practices, like mediation. Well, that, we're not going to remediate a situation where there is, or have mediation where there is a situation where one student is basically, there is an imbalance of power, and one still bullying another. But we've gone past that. But as a preventive method, if we constantly incorporate restorative practices in our work with students in schools, there is a greater chance that there's less, less bullying will go on because students will learn better ways of communicating with one another so that they, they don't get to that stage where one student bullies another student. Then we have a whole section about on, reporting bullying and harassment. So now it has occurred, but now this is what they need to do. And we have the online bullying reporting application, which, and the benefit of that is that you don't have to go ask for the form or anything. So the, like, the targeted student may be embarrassed and doesn't want to tell anyone. Well, they don't have to worry about that. They can just get online and, and file the report. And then it also encourages this, not just students, but staff also to report bullying. That is a critical piece, just like reporting child abuse. They are responsible for reporting bullying or harassment or intimidation when they see that. And then if you continue further down, Ms. Ellis, you should be coming into investigations. So then in the area of investigations, of course, there should be immediate, if there's a report, and this will be in the pot, in the procedure where it says within 48 hours or two days, they will begin, do the investigation. But an important change in this policy is that once they have competed, completed the investigation, they have the outcome, they will actually notify the parents of the targeted student as well as the parents of the alleged offender. And so both parents are being informed. And then the last piece has to do with the intervention remedial efforts, which I think are fairly similar to what we had previously, except that we did take the restorative practices out and put that up in the prevention section. So then if you continue, I think that's pretty, pretty, it's very similar to our previous one. And then we have, oh, wait, it's, okay, consequences is the last section that we have incorporated. And that has to do with making sure that we do have consequences, consequences for students. Also, that there's consequences if anyone's made false accusations about bullying, that there would be consequences for that. And one of the things they do point out, though, that, that, is the focus on not using exclusionary types of disciplinary measures when you do need to discipline a student, but to use, really work at exhausting all the behavioral interventions that are available for a student. And then if you continue, keep going forward. I think that's about it. That's, it does, it just directs the chief executive officer to make sure she updates the administrative procedure.
Okay, thank you. You have finished, correct?
Yes.
I do report. Okay, I appreciate it. Any comments from the committee, questions from the committee? Anyone? Okay, seeing no hands raised, I have a question. Does this policy cover employees or just students?
This policy just covers students. We, you all actually do have a policy that does address employees also.
Okay.
But this particular one is driven by state law and by the Maryland Model Policy.
Okay, I appreciate that. And I also appreciate the fact that you pulled that, pulled restorative, uh, practices out and put it under prevention. I'm sure that I have a colleague, Ms. Shayla Adam Stafford, that is going to be extremely pleased, uh, and I am pleased. So, uh, I thank you for that. And, um, if there are no other comments by the committee, then may I have a motion to recommend the revised draft policy fifty-one forty-three bullying, harassment or intimidation be forwarded to the full board as a first reader at the April twenty-eight, twenty-twenty-second board meeting? Do I have a second? Okay, it's been moved and properly seconded that we move policy fifty-one forty-three forward to the full board on April twenty-eight, twenty-twenty-second as a first reader. All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Uh, and the motion passes. Uh, Ms. Welch, I thank you so much. And if I'm not mistaken, this puts us in compliance, correct?
I think it will.
It will, okay.
Through the board, that, you know, the different steps with the Board of Education as we continue through it. It should, we should be wrapping everything up in time.
Okay, I appreciate that. And I'm sure on behalf of my colleagues on the board, we all want to be in compliance. So thank you and the efforts of your team. We appreciate it. So moving forward. Legislative update. We're moving, there's nothing for four point O revised policies for discussion. So we're moving to five point O legislative updates. And now we will hear from Ms. Irvin, who I am sure is happy that the legislation is close for the year. Okay, Ms. Irvin, Ms. Irvin.
Good evening, everyone. Yes, uh, signee die was yesterday, so the ninety-day legislative session is over for, uh, twenty-twenty-two, but in some ways our work is just beginning as these bills are signed into law. Um, many of them will require this committee's, um, uh, work as, uh, it comes to the school system and we will create policies and administrative procedures. Um, this is, uh, Mabe is not going to be meeting until April twenty-fifth. So I spoke with the, the chairwoman this morning, um, Judy Mickens Murray, about my report, which will be brief. And so what I'm gonna cover for all of you on the committee are the bills that we have been following, uh, particularly the bills that you all, um, asked to be supported. Um, there was eleven bills, uh, from the last meeting, and I want to go through those really quickly and tell you which one of those bills passed or failed. Uh, and I want to start with, um, the School Board Realignment Bill, which is House Bill three fifty-five, Prince George's County Board of Education Work Group Alterations and Orientation. Uh, this bill was enacted. It establishes a work group on the membership and to recommend best practices in compensation, operation, other areas of the Board of Education. The board will start to transition to an all-elected board in twenty-twenty-four, at which point board members will vote for a board chair and vice chair. And it initiates the work group that would evaluate and make recommendations before an all-elected board comes into full effect. Um, the next bill I'm gonna cover and I'm gonna go.
The serving.
Yes.
Excuse me.
Oh, yes, Dr. Miller.
I apologize. So the, go back, uh, the question I've been asked is, when, you said all of this will be effective in twenty-twenty-four. My understanding that the piece where the board will elect their own officers of chair and vice chair, it will become effective December twenty-twenty-two. Is that correct?
So, yeah, Dr. Miller, I appreciate the question. My understanding is that December, in December, there will be a report out of the, um, appointed board. Uh, and at that point, they may recommend in that December, at that December, uh, period of time, whether or not the board will vote for its own chair and vice chair. But as of what's inside this bill, that is not, has not been determinative. So I might have to get back to you tomorrow or sometime later this week, um, as they wrap up and find out exactly where this is going. But this is the report that came from the bill passage.
Okay, thank you. I, I just, you know, when you said that, my understanding from talking to a legislator was that that second piece in terms of the board members being able to, uh, appoint, I mean, elect their own, um, yeah, elect their, uh, chair and vice chair, uh, would become effective in December twenty-twenty-two. So, I don't know, I'm just.
Yeah, uh, Dr. Miller, that is the question of the day because that has gone back and forth, as you probably know well, uh, throughout this whole ninety-day session. So if it's been worked out, we will get an answer to that question. But as what I, when I'm relating to you all on the, on this committee is that is not what was written into the bill and what was passed. So we'll have, we'll have to get back to you on that, Dr. Miller. I'll make a, a, a point to call some folks who can get back to me hopefully with the answer that we need.
Thank you.
Okay, I appreciate the discussion, but can we please hold the questions until after Ms. Irvin has finished her report?
I apologize, but I have to, uh, sign off because I have another Zoom and I'm glad that she made that first. And, uh, Chair Mickens Murray, I apologize for interrupting.
I, I accept your apology.
Thank you. Good night, everybody.
Good night. Okay, let's move on to House Bill nineteen, um, School Construction Pedestrian Safety Plan, Safe Walk to School. That bill passed. So, uh, it started out having opposition from Mabe and then, of course, our CEO and this board, um, may move some, move this thing forward in a positive way. So we should all be very proud of that. And there will be more to report on this. Again, I just want to move through these because there will be a very long written report that I will, um, make sure that the committee gets and it can go up on board docs. So HB nineteen did pass. Um, HB sixty-eight Senate Bill forty, Interagency Commission on School Construction Systemic Renovation Projects, did not pass. Which was a little shocking to me, but I did find out that this was folded under Maggie McIntosh's Bill twelve ninety, which I'll report on in a second. But that bill stand, standalone, uh, it did not pass either chamber.
Wow.
House Bill one fifty, Senate Bill one twenty-four, Public Schools Grant Program to Reduce and Compost School Waste. That House Bill did not pass, but the Senate Bill passed. So that bill did move forward. So for, um, uh, all the CCAC members and board member Boozer Struther, who I know worked very hard for the passage of this bill, it did, it did make it out. It passed. Senate Bill five twenty-eight, so many people across the state of Maryland are watching this bill, Climate Solutions Act Now, twenty-twenty-two, did pass. And the governor did not veto this legislation and allowed it to become law without his signature. Yay. So that was a good one. Um, House Bill five thirty-one, Senate Bill three eighty-three, Maryland Association of Environmental and Outdoor Education Grant Funding and Evaluation Extension. Uh, the House Bill did not pass, but it did pass in the Senate. So that is good news. So that bill made it through. So that's another one of the bills that the entire board was supporting. The next one is, uh, House Bill six ninety-six, Senate Bill nine forty-eight, Public Utilities Electric School Bus Pilot Program. The House Bill passed. Senate Bill did not.
What?
But, yeah, the House Bill passed and Senate Bill did not. So that means that the bill is moving forward. So it moved forward, uh, without the Senate passage. So it didn't make it out of the original chamber, but that bill is going to move forward. It takes effect June one, twenty-twenty-two. And of course, we'll get into the details, which I've spoken about several times in the committee, about what that will look like, um, for our school system in particular. House Bill eleven sixty-five, Senate Bill five eighty-eight, Capital Projects High Performance and Green Buildings. That bill did not make it through either chamber. So that bill failed. The next one, House Bill eleven sixty-three, Primary and Secondary Education, Virtual Education Requirements. That bill passed both, uh, chambers. And I have to, um, shout out, uh, the, the chairman of this committee, Judy Mickens Murray, for we might have passed this bill over had she not flagged it. As a matter of fact, there was a, an emergency meeting of Mabe and Fazam. Uh, and I was on the call and they asked if any jurisdiction had any issues with this bill. I said, yes, we do. I told them what our issues were. They were put into, um, into the bill at the last minute and that bill passed. So this is what dream teamwork makes the dream work.
Yes, 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 yes.
Um, the next bill is House Bill twelve ninety, Public School Construction Funding and Administration, Sponsored by Maggie McIntosh, passed both houses and the governor actually signed that bill into law yesterday, or day before. The next one is House Bill fourteen twenty-six, Senate Bill six forty, Maintenance of Effort Requirements. Both bills failed in their respective chambers. I need to get a lot more information on what happened here and what the fallout from those bills not passing on maintenance of effort will be on our school system. And I'll report on that on the twenty-fifth. Um, and I will speak to the chairman of this committee at great length about, about that bill and, uh, moving forward. And the last one is House Bill fourteen fifty, Blueprint for Maryland's Future, passed through both, uh, chambers and the governor signed that bill into law. That is my report.
Thank you so much. I appreciate the update. Are there any comments from the committee, concerns, questions, anyone? Pam, any comments?
I just wanted to thank Ms. Irving for all of her work. Sorry for the noise. For all the work. I know it was a long session, so I appreciate it. A lot of deals came through. So I appreciate it.
Thank you, Pam. Pam?
I mean, the board member Boozer Strather was so.
That's all right. Thank you so much. This is my connection so poor. Be really quick, just a big thank you. I think this is a very successful session for us and moving into climate action in our school construction, electric buses is incredibly important. So thank you, Ms. Irving and the entire, entire team and board member Mickens Murray for your services.
Thank you so much. You know, any other comments from any board members? I mean, any, um, committee members? You know, I am extremely pleased with the outcome of our collective work. Team, teams work. They really do. And I think we're evident of that. So you all should pat yourselves on the back. I, I am patting you on the back. Okay, me too. All right, I'm gonna stay on script so that Ms., uh, Ellis won't be upset with me. Uh, let's see. Okay, closing remarks. So I, I'm at closing remarks and I think, uh, you guys have done an excellent job. So you should go back to, uh, the CEO and Mr. Dickerson and tell them that they need to buy you some pizza 'cause you've done an excellent job. Thank you so much. Uh, any other comments from anyone? Okay, as the follow-ups and next steps, the committee will recommend to the full board at the April twenty-eight meeting to consider the following policies be sent out for public comment. New draft policy, Student Registered Sex Offender Entry on, uh, School Property. New draft policy eleven twenty, Maryland Public Information Act and revised draft policy zero one oh seven Ethics Regulations. The next policy and governance committee meeting will be held on Tuesday, April the twenty-six, twenty-twenty-two at five P M, virtually. Please check the board page on the PC, C, PG CPS website for more information. Any comments? Yes, ma'am.
Um, did we want to discuss the blueprint for Maryland?
Oh, I'm sorry. Uh, yes, Pam, I mean, Vice Chair Boozer Struthers, I am so sorry. I got so excited about all of our, um, accomplishments that I moved forward too quickly. So, um, Blueprint for Maryland's Future Act Implementation and Accountability.
Uh, yeah, thanks so much. I, uh, I, I don't have a specific report, but I, I do, uh, I do want to coordinate with, uh, Dr. Libby's office to, to have an official reporting, catch us up on those, uh, the April, the April report that was recently posted.
Okay. Anything else? Thank you. Thank you so much. So if there's nothing else that we need to discuss, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn at six o'clock. Note that. The properly seconded that we adjourned. Thank you, everyone. Very good meeting and great.
Take a vote, ma'am. Take a vote.
Oh, oh, that's right. She got on me last time. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, it's unanimous. We are adjourned. Thank you all. Thank you, Ms. Ellis.